He noticed.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it was funny. Yeah.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly Supervisor Moore.
Present.
Councilwoman Machima.
Present.
Councilman Isili.
Here.
Councilman Powell.
Here today.
Councilman Sebo.
Present.
Thank you. Alright, our first agenda item is with respect to the Southampton Housing Authority HUD five-year plan and Curtis Highsmith, the executive director of our housing authority is here. Feel free to stand at the podium or sit with us, whatever you choose.
They get a stamp.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. Remember, some of us haven't been through a five-year plan with you.
Oh, okay.
Perhaps only one.
Really? So you know what, I will say this. This should be smooth sailing because it's pretty much routine.
You do this every five years.
We have to do this for every five years. This is my second plan typically. Well, first of all, let's start. I'm the first executive director, Southampton Housing Authority. We have to do this every five years as part of our final requirement with HUD. But remember, this is not Southampton's, Southampton Housing Authority's plan. This is Southampton's plan. Because we administer this program, this is the Housing Choice voucher program. We administer this program on behalf of the town of Southampton. And therefore, you, you contract us to do all administration submissions along with ensuring that we comply with all HUD standards and guidelines. Typically, this plan, if there was no material change or adjustments in the plan from the prior year, typically it would just be a meeting we would hold, make sure that it had public access, and then we would grant or approve it as a word of commissioners and submit it to HUD. But because I'm introducing a, a proposed program, I feel it's important to speak to you about it because at the end of the day, you're going to have to approve it. But since it is your first and I'm not, each of you, I believe only one of the
I don't know, only Tom and Chuck.
Maybe know or recognize what the Housing Choice voucher is, what's a part of the plan program and what it is that we do. You probably don't even know the specifics of the program and how many units. The Housing Choice voucher program, right now, our program, we have an allocation of approximately 326 vouchers per month. Out of those 326 vouchers per month, we're probably only leasing up 110. So we're at a very minimum allocation of vouchers. And the reason why, there are no units. My utilization is approximately 35%, which means that when a person gets screened for, or screened for eligibility for the program, they're going, they're looking, they're looking within our own municipality. And it, within our admin plan right now, we have a policy that requires them to lease, lease up in Southampton township for at least one year before reporting to another municipality. But you can by a reasonable accommodation request, go to another municipality and request that your voucher be reported. And 90% of those, because there's just no units here, are reporting to Riverhead, to Brookhaven, and further out west. What does that mean for the program overall? We get an administrative fee for every voucher to be issued. So we're servicing that voucher, we're screening that voucher, we're doing background checks, which are all resources we have to pay for. Staff is taken care of. We're doing everything that we have to do with regards to creating the opportunity for the tenant or applicant to go out and find a unit. Then they send them out in the street and they're not looking, they're not finding, they're not locating anything within our municipality. Forcing them to ask, to request for us to report it to another region, we lose the admin fee for that application. They get absorbed in that municipality, we lose the admin fee, so we did all the work, they get the benefit and resources for it. When we lose that, that applicant, or what ends up happening is the applicant would be looking for, I think we give 90 days for an applicant to find a unit. We give two extensions, two 60-day extensions, and still they're unable to find any units, whether it be in Southampton, Riverhead, or Islip, as far out as Nassau County. And they end up going past their term and looking for a unit, and therefore get put back on the waiting list.
HUD, HUD pays the fee?
I'm sorry?
So HUD pays the fee that you're talking about, the administrative fee?
They pay the administrative fee once it's leased up, but it pays the administrative fee to the municipality that it's leased up. So if it's not Southampton, we don't, we won't get that administrative fee. The other municipality will, and they will reap the benefits of that.
Do you get any fee Curtis?
No.
Would you give us the numbers again? How many we qualify, how many vouchers we qualify for and how many are landed here in Southampton?
326. 326 is what we qualify, that's our annual, I'm sorry, our monthly allocation, which is approximately an allocation of 3,912. But we are only, we're averaging about 110 AMCA, give or take. Which, you know, even for our utilization being 35%, that's actually down from the 40% when we initially did the plan five years ago.
What goes into that qualification for the 326? Is it based on housing units or is it based on?
So HUD determines how much each region is allocated, it gets how many vouchers. And that's usually tied to our, our annual dispersment, meaning how much, how much internal total half we receive. One of the other reasons, other concerns or issues we also have is because our program, because it's very difficult to find landlords east, obviously, of Long Island, we had to go to HUD and request a exception, and would be Southampton and East Hampton. We got a, an exception up to 120%, I'm sorry, 120% of the payment standard in order for us to attract landlords to participate in the program. So we are the highest paid agency, or highest paid region on HAP and all of Long Island. 130% is the cap. Most of the, I don't know if you understand what I mean by that. Every, a national Suffolk, National Suffolk is giving a payment standard based on this program. They come out and on the annual basis on what they consider the payment standard for, for the Housing Choice voucher program, based on bedroom count. We have to ask for a increase in order to attract landlords to participate in the program.
Is that tied to area median income?
There's, yes, National Suffolk, area median income. Now, if we're asking for greater HAP, I'm sorry, greater payment standard, but our half amount, meaning the revenue we receive doesn't increase, that means that we're eating into our HAP allocation, which is also the reason why we have very few vouchers on the street. We're, we're eating into our allotment that we would have per month because the majority of that is going to higher rates. We have to start looking at opportunities of creating more, of units, units of housing. But also, for more than zip, another option that I believe would be reasonable for us to consider as well.
Can I ask you a question Curtis? On the rental side, is there protections for the person renting their property? Because I've heard this time and again, I have actually a friend that's going through this situation right now. That people are pulling rentals because of squatters. Because they're getting stuck with people in their homes and they can't get rid of them because of, because of rental protection laws. And I believe that we have lost a lot of our rental market in the town because, I mean, somebody posted about it the other day and there was, I can't even tell you how many comments were, "I went through it, I lived it, I will never rent my house again." So does, does this program provide more, I guess, property owner protections against that?
Well, unfortunately, rental protections are what they are. What would happen is if a tenant is violating their HAP agreement, they'll be terminated from the program. It'll be quicker for you to, to start the eviction process because now you have an administrative reasoning for, it's not just failing to pay rent, you, you actually, well, we're terminated from a program which you can use as your legal, legal reasoning for the eviction.
Because I think, and I just think that this would actually help if there were more protections for homeowners that wanted to rent. And I think it would, I think it would, you would see more rentals become available because I think people are just frankly scared, I mean, through the pandemic and other things.
I'm so concerned about squatter's rights. Our, our agency was a victim of that. We had a tenant who, who absolutely terrorized Hampton Bay for years. And we, I mean, to, to, to the degree that they smashed windows and slashed doors, they, they damaged property that belonged to the housing authority and tenants. They were shooting BB guns out of the window at tenants and hiding behind bushes and scaring them, a myriad of things. And each time that person got arrested for their activity, they were deemed incompetent but not insane. And therefore, the incompetency allowed them to be released with all of the charges basically null and void. They were eliminated because they were incompetent, meaning they didn't know what they were doing, but they weren't insane. So there was some rationale behind it. So each action that happened, we were, we had the, we had an obligation to let that tenant go back into the unit until we evicted them. Finally, we'll go through the eviction process. And that was during COVID. So that was a year and a half and it was two-year process.
It's an expensive process, it's a long drawn-out process.
So I, I would definitely help and I, and I think all of us, our housing agencies want to lobby for, you know, more defined and more security for landlords.
Because I'd also, if you could tie that to this program, I think it would incentivize people to rent in this manner.
I think the only thing that we can do is, is offer up assistance in the eviction process. And try to assist in, in working, whether it be with some of our not-for-profit attorneys. We can help through the process itself. We can kind of navigate through trying to expedite that process as best as possible. But one of the, the eviction, I'm sorry, the squatter rights are just absolutely debilitating the rental market right now. I agree.
Thank you.
I agree.
The laws that were put in under COVID have sunset. So a lot of the folks, a lot of the laws that you experienced are no longer in place. And also, New York State has passed a good cause eviction, but individual municipalities actually have to opt into that program for tenants' rights or, or, you know, tenant landlord rights. But I wouldn't want, like, some of the concerns about this to really affect what we're doing here. I know, you know, renting, renting is, 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 you know, it is what it is. You know, you have a tenant and they have rights and all that. But, but just wanted to make the point that the, that a lot of the laws that were put in during the pandemic have sunset in the state of New York.
Yes, they have. Yes, they have.
You may very well be able to get rid of that person today.
No, yeah, well, if they happened today, it still would be a 90.
Still a very long process.
Of course, I know.
90-day, if you have to first make the.
It's a sheriff's proceeding.
Yes.
And it's costly, I get it.
And when it comes to regulatory agencies like ours, where we have subsidies behind that, we have to go through a system of terminating before we can actually get to the portion of eviction.
Would you say this is more of the exception than the rule?
I think it would.
Okay.
These 326 vouchers, are those issued just for Southampton Town?
Southampton Town. That's what HUD has allocated Southampton Town in terms of their available number of vouchers could be issued based on the HAP that's been dispersed. And they're basing that HAP on average rents at $1,355. We know that nothing around there, including the studios, $1,355. So that's the reason why our HAP is being kind of torn into as quickly as it is, everybody should say. So the next five pages are the actual submission on the, for the five-year plan. It's what HUD asked me to submit in terms of an overview. And then we can actually draft a, a, a policy plan to follow, which we have here. And so the best thing to do is, most of what we have in terms of our plan, there is no material change from the previous plan. We're still enacting, we still know that, for example, for on the first page, A1, it's just our agency, our, our code for, you know, for HUD is NY141. So if anyone asks you, what is your HUD identity, Southampton, yours is NY141. And that's what the, the fiscal year for our plan is. We sunshine on January 1st, sunset on December 31st. So we're a calendar year in terms of our, our fiscal year. And so this would be enacted January 1st, 2025. We are responsible for three plans. Annual plan, which every year we plan, we set for. The admin plan, which is the actual outline of the administration for the Housing Choice voucher. It's about 500 pages long. If you like to read it, I will definitely present for you. But there are no material changes in the operations of the Housing Choice voucher program either. So there's no reason to, to amend that. And then this five-year plan. The second session there, in the bottom there is if we were participating with a, another lead agency like CDC, Long Island, along with Housing Partnership, which we do not. On the section B, where is the plan element?
What about Habitat for Humanity?
They are not a lead agent on a Housing Choice voucher program, nor are they a partner, but they're a partner on projects and developments.
Like 72H.
Which I also mentioned in the report as well.
Okay.
So any, the plan, the plan elements, normally typically same thing, there's been no material changes in our mission. Our goals or objectives, but what I did do is I did make some updates on some of the things that happened over the last five years that would aid in our agency as well as our municipality, demonstrating our pro-housing initiatives, what we've done in terms of creating more housing opportunities. I was able to obviously formalize Sandy Hollow, Speonk during that period of time. Also, as you stated, we're able to show and demonstrate we've worked with not-for-profit agencies like Habitat for Humanity for creating more housing opportunities to low to moderate income communities. We also have been able to create, the township created, the housing, I'm sorry, Community Housing Fund, which is a funding source that would assist in ensuring that what end result or construction or developments they're built can remain affordable because you can offset that cost, whether it be the burden of the acquisition, construction costs, or just gap funding. It allows us to keep the pro forma or operations of the, of the project low, therefore keeping rents low. So these are things I added in there to demonstrate to HUD that we have been, and we have been working as a municipality to create more housing opportunity and also more opportunity for us to keep it affordable, to affordable. 72H exchange is another, we developed here and we see in my report itself, it says developing opportunities. We documented the 72 exchange as being one of the advantages for us to use. And remember, that 72H exchange isn't just homeownership, it can also be for rentals. So we can use those programs to develop, redevelop, or to rehab homes and repurpose, repurpose them on the program, which we have done. We have two units that we were able to rehab and those two units are participating on the Housing Choice voucher program. In terms of the, the reports, the progress reports, everything on the Housing Choice voucher program has been pretty much the norm in terms of our, we have a monthly filing, which we share with the town of River, I'm sorry, town of Southampton's Controller Department. They get a report of our financials every month, it demonstrates what our expenditures are, what our expenses are, what we, where our allocations are. So they basically get the profit and loss and the balance sheet of the program on a month-to-month basis. They review that and before we finalize with HUD, they would have to approve and then we submit it to HUD for final approval. I will say this, that the housing authority, in terms of our filing, we are responsible to keep up to a 97% accuracy on our PIC scores. That would mean documentation, inspections, accurate information, our accounting, our compliance. We average about 99 to 100% every single month, which makes us a high-performing housing authority. You should be very happy that, and very pleased that the activities of the housing authority, most agencies are in the 80s. Developments, as I stated, we talked about Sandy Hollow, we talked about Speonk. We gave a kind of an outline of, a description of Southampton as being a resort community about 85 miles away from New York City. That typically sees five-month, four to five-month activity, but our workforce are the ones that are, I should say, are businesses are being affected by the lack of housing because the workforce have no way and don't feel necessary or feel the need to travel long distances to come to jobs. So they're finding it difficult locally to find employees, to employ employees to work in their local businesses. So we're trying to see what we can do in creating and establishing more housing opportunity. And that's where I introduced the new plan, where I, and the part that I really wanted to discuss. The Housing Choice voucher program allows for a program called homeowner assistance. It's, any, any participant on the Housing Choice voucher program is capable and is able to get a mortgage to subsidize a mortgage rather than the rental revenue. Meaning, anything over 30% of their income can, just like it does under the program where it's subsidized to pay rent, you can use that subsidy to actually pay for purchasing a house and also monthly mortgage. It's those, the applicants that I have that are at that cost, that, that almost at that level where they're only getting a certain dollar amount in terms of HAP or payment assistance, but they would qualify because now the revenue from the HAP gets added on and is actually accounted as more, I'm sorry, as income for their penny. So when they go to a mortgage, you can see whatever they're getting in HAP is added to their income, making them income eligible for the mortgage that they're applying for. And there are a lot of the agencies, a lot of banks now are accepting this as a measure and an opportunity. So we're working and shadowing with HUD to identify a number of living institutions and mortgage agencies. They will not only accept this mortgage homeownership program, but also will help through, to get a buy-in through Sony Mae. So it now becomes a first-time home wire program as well.
Is there any issue with using this to actually pay the mortgage itself?
No, no, it's, it's part of the program, yes. It's, it's an actual program that's set aside to pay the mortgage and pay the mortgage as well as to assist in purchasing the house. This would be perfect for those Habitat homes. Would have been, and I think it would be a great model for ongoing Habitat deals because they fall within that 60% area median income, that's Habitat's threshold. And so they would kind of qualify for this particular program. I don't see this east of the canal because it's more workforce. And typically, we would have a higher EMI just so that we can be closer to 80%. But I think when we do Riverside, we do regions like Speonk, Hampton Bay, this would be a perfect opportunity to get people off of subsidy dependency and into homeownership. I think as a goal, our community should be looking into that anyway.
You didn't mention those Habitat homes that.
I did under development.
Did you?
Yes, I did.
I wouldn't want to eliminate any, any properties, especially east of the canal. We actually need housing east of the canal and, you know, the board here may very well want to, you know, institute initiatives east of the canal which would fit into this program.
I want you to, you know, I would love for there to be a mix. I would love for there to be a mixed community like we're trying to do over at, Watermill would be a perfect opportunity where you have a mixed community, where you can have some agents, some units at 60%, but majority being closer to 80%. Remember this guys, even though that we're getting the subsidy to acquire the property, it's still expensive to build, expensive to operate, expensive to maintain, carrying costs are still up there. So we, we're not going to, we're never going to be a municipality that sees hundreds of units. So we have to do what we need to do to substantiate the cost on the lot with fewer number of units than everyone else. And that's, in a nutshell, what I would need from the town, since we are, since this is a change in a introduction of a, a new policy. We are not a PHA, we are not also public housing. And the other reason why we would ask the town to give its okay is because we're going to have to ask another lead agency, not-for-profit, to run this until we become proficient enough to run it on our own. Since we already have a relationship with CDC of Long Island, I would ask that they come in and they would come and set up the program, make sure that it runs compliant, we would mirror that program and make sure that we follow the standards so at a later date we can take over and administer the program. But we would, out of our own admin, because there's also admin involved in this, out of our own admin, we would hire, contract CDC of Long Island to administer this. We would work with them with also getting some of the down payment grants and other activities. But they also have a, what's called a family sufficiency program that further assists families to become more, to substantiate it and be able to be more independent on homeownership. So all of these programs are factored in, work together in getting our, also first-time home wire training, the education involved with ensuring the establishing a household budget, they do that all internally. So that will assist all of our agents, all of our applicants that we get to participate in this program to be, I guess, more successful.
But you haven't had it before, you said?
We've never had it. We've never had this program before. A lot of agencies haven't been using it because they weren't familiar with it. And now HUD is kind of promoting it a lot more. We would be doing more seminars, especially for the municipality, so you understand greater on the opportunity. So then when we get these 72H properties, we can probably try to do our best to maybe allocate this program towards that.
What's the name of this program?
This is homeownership, HCV or Housing Choice voucher homeownership program. And HUD did numbers from 2015 to 2024, as stated in the report here. 45% of the applicants on this program saw a 25% increase in their income. So just by giving that sense of homeownership, that feel of ownership, giving that, that feel of wealth and equity, it created an opportunity for those families to see a growth in their financial status, their state as, as well as their independence. Also, individuals on this program, the majority of them, although this program lasts for 15 years, whereas most mortgages are 30, most participants on this program are no longer either, no longer income eligible or they drop out of the program after eight years. It's just become a very successful program in getting people again off of subsidy dependence.
In some of these projects, Curtis, are you, are you working with CHF on some of these?
We will be.
Okay.
We will be. We will need the Community Housing Fund to obviously keep costs down as much as we can to ensure that we can keep it affordable. So I look forward to, you know, introducing this to the community. And not only that, I also look forward to people, participants on our waiting list, to take advantage of this. When I first came in here, there were 5,000 names on the waiting list. When we did this report, there were 3,000 names on the waiting list. Now we're down to 208.
So, so you mentioned.
Is it because they've found homes or because they've just given up on the program?
They've given up, they've transitioned, their income's changed, they're no longer income eligible, they've moved. But after we've purged the application, I'm sorry, the waiting list, we were able to determine what that final number of applicants there are now eligible.
So is this whole thing HCV?
It's all HCV.
So even the 72H programs are part of that?
No, 72H program is not part of the agency.
Right, so I'm just, I guess my question is, how are we clearly defining the Housing Choice voucher as opposed to some of the other work? Because I know that the, it's mentioned in here, some of the 72H work. So, but, but the Housing Choice voucher is a specific program in itself.
Right. So my reasoning for including it is, if you look on the Form 50077, it mentions how is the municipality furthering fair housing? Part of that, that furthering of fair housing is.
The work you do with 72H.
Not just that, but you have to intentionally create housing opportunities in your municipality. And so how do you do that? You do that through receiving properties from the county. You do that through the Community Housing Fund, being able to provide a lower cost, a lower cost in the final product, lag those subsidies from the town. So you have to demonstrate that you as an agency or as a town or a municipality are, I hate to use this now because I know the next conversation is pro-housing, but that you are pro-housing.
Right.
You have to demonstrate that as part of the overall plan and, and show HUD that you're not only looking at, well, it's most municipalities, workforce, but you're also looking at low to moderate income, and how do you make that happen? And that's why the Habitat homes were kind of documented in there. Also as a segue to the homeownership program that we just discussed.
And just to clarify, because I'm one of the, one of the four newbies, well, you're not really a newbie, but you get what I'm saying, new to this. The Housing, Housing Choice voucher program is really a program for the homeowner. It's really for it, right? Is, is that correct, that they're the ones participating in it with you in partnership to provide the opportunity to the renter? Just so I'm clear. Just so I'm clear.
So, was, yes, the homeownership program that I'm introducing.
Yep.
Is for, uh, is, well, is to get our Housing Choice voucher applicants and people on the waiting list the opportunity to home, for homeownership.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that's all we're doing. We, instead of looking at rental opportunities.
Okay.
Instead of, because we have a lack of...
That's what this new plan does. It's looking, uh, we're, in the past, it moved, it looked more toward rentals. Now, this new program is looking more toward homeownership.
It's opening the opportunity for, um, not only rentals, but also homeownership.
And they will be able to partner with that with our down payment assistance program?
Correct. With your down sit, pay payment assistance program with the state as well as the county. So, we'll be able to do a, a combination of down payment assistance, which, you know, we're working on this now with the, we just talked about last week, um, you know, North Sea Geocox, with all these down payment assistance, the mortgage now becomes conforming. So, now you have a, a conforming Sunny May mortgage where you don't have PMI. You don't have to worry about mortgage insurance. It really now becomes really affordable. I'll also say one more thing that, to, as an advantage. This still operates as the Housing Choice voucher program. Meaning, I have to do annual inspections of the house to ensure that they're maintained and kept up in accordance to the program's standards. I still have to do income qualification annually, recertification to make sure that you're still, uh, income eligible, um, um, to, if, and if you're not, then you no longer need the assistance. We still have to, they still have to comply with all HAP agreements, so, and program, uh, prior parameters. So, it's oversight too to a community where they're like, I don't want that because it's, you're, you're circumventing a Section Eight applicant in our community. Well, it's a homeowner. By the way, I'll never say anything negative to the, uh, participants on our program. We run a very clean program. I'm very proud of, of, uh, the program that we run for the town of Southampton. Um, everyone complies. There are other agencies that do run, uh, have, uh, Section Eight within our township that I can't say that they're as, um, hands-on as we are as an agency. Um, and sometimes we get blamed for their activity or lack of oversight. But our program is impeccable. As a matter of fact, uh, we have a problem with landlords because we're a little too strict. And I'd rather be too strict than have people, uh, see our stuff is lighted and being edited freely.
I know that you have a very good track record, that's why I asked what I asked earlier. Because I know you guys run a tight ship.
Oh, um, yeah, thank you.
You drive around and make sure people cut their cars.
It's like you.
And move their cars. I got a call the other day, you know, uh, this is just house, not rental, but someone created another driveway. I'm, I'm renting the house and taking photos, calling code enforcement, uh, making sure they go the proper, uh, parameters. Because this stuff can't fail. It just needs one bad apple to ruin all the work that we're doing. And so, we won't let that happen. Um, and, and we, people, people always focus on the negative. Well, I appreciate you saying that. We do run a tight ship and we make sure that individuals know that if they're going to join, they're going to participate, you're going to follow the rules on, and I terminated a lot of landlords for not doing so.
This, uh, so this is a new, you've added this, the, um, in the strategies. Yeah, the homeownership program.
Chris, do you need anything from the board in terms of a resolution?
Yes.
Hearing requirement?
I, I think approving, I think the board approving the five-year plan, um, uh, it actually also by association approves the use or the, uh, of the availability or the opportunity to add in, uh, the, uh, homeownership program, so...
Did you, um, do the forty-five day hearing process or is that something?
Yes.
You did it or...
Yes. Any other questions?
I might have one.
The Sandy Hollow Cove you listed as, you know, under, uh, serves residents under sixty and eighty percent of the AMI.
Yes.
You didn't note that in, in, um, Speonk Commons, is that the same?
It's the same. Sandy Hollow and Speonk are one project. Uh, they're, they're representing one project. Um, in order for us to actually get the state funding, we had to combine the two projects together for sixty-six units. Um, and I, I've, I've stated this before and I'll state it again. We were the, we were the highest allocated agency of all New York State with the fewest number of units, um, which demonstrates New York State's really vested to ensure that, uh, Southampton receives funding. I get a call on a regular basis.
That's the ninety-nine percent that the pick, is that what you were saying?
No, the ninety-nine, sixty, ninety-nine percent is our, um, our score for operating and administering the program. So, basically, um, it's our report card.
Yeah, well, congratulations on that score.
Thank you. I'm not, I'm, I'm always, I'm never satisfied. I'm always asking why I'm at one hundred. Because we're usually at a hundred and, and, uh, so my staff gets mad at me.
We mentioned sixty percent of AMI, just so everybody knows, sixty percent of AMI is about sixty-five thousand dollars a year.
Right, right. And it requires a lot of, uh, help to get us, uh, get homeownership.
Right.
Requires a lot of help. Any other questions?
I'm good.
When you said before that you're going to need the assistance of, uh, an agency like CDC or LIPA, is that, you know, uh, going to be separately requested? Is that something you are going to ask to have the resolution?
Well, approving the plans, you know, normally typically we would approve the plan. Uh, be, remember, this is Southampton Towns program, the Housing Choice voucher program. By you, by resolution approving our five-year plan, you're approving, uh, uh, our agency to seek, hire and operate with a third-party, maybe CDC of Long Island, is what I introduced, to implement the, uh, housing, homeownership program.
What, what funding sources that usually come out of what would already be budgeted for twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
So, it's already into the budget presumably?
But that's the thing, it's not, um, uh, because this is not, this, this is, uh, a, a, another program would not come out of our current HAP allocation. So, what we receive right now for allocating for rental doesn't come out of that. It's under a separate category of HUD, I'm sorry, of, uh, Housing Choice voucher program. It's its own separate entity, so therefore, we receive another HAP contract to administer each individual home that we are able to, to, uh, to comply with.
And the monies for them come out of that money?
Money comes out of that, yeah. It doesn't, doesn't come out of our, our hands, it doesn't come out of the town. There's no additional revenue that we have to be concerned with.
That's great, okay. I don't have any other questions, anybody else? Thank you for coming in today.
Yeah, a few of these programs I'm going to be introducing, um, soon in a later date, but, um, it's time for us to really start making it easier for homeownership for, and I'm, I have a, you know, look, I'm, I have vested interest in this. I have two kids living in my basement. You gotta get out of there. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis.
Thank you.
All right, our next topic is just transition to eighty David White's Lane Conceptual Planning Study. And with us today is Janice Shear, our Town Planning and Development Administrator, and Seth Race, our Planner.
And we have Ramble online who's going to go over the, um, report and the study.
We have enough for...
If there is, it's okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good.
You did a lot of meetings on this, didn't you, to put this together?
Yes, this has been a really interesting process. Oh, yeah, there's Shelby. That's Shelby Smith from Ramble. Uh, maybe not. Kevin, can you...
Kevin, can you make it louder? You can't hear her out here. Could you try again, Shelby? It's a little better. Kevin, can you, can you increase it a little bit more?
Maybe when they stop wrinkling.
Um, just as by way of introduction, um, Janice Shear, Town Planning and Development Administrator. I have Seth Race, our Planner. We have Shelby Smith from Ramble. And you may remember that this was, um, a project that was funded by NYSERTA. And it is, um, something they're doing throughout New York State to show the, the carbon transition from like a coal-fired plant to a renewable energy, you know, type of scenario. So, I'll let Shelby kind of go through everything, but it was a really fun, um, thing to be able to participate in because nobody's proposing anything here. It's owned by National Grid, they're not, you know, there's not a sewage treatment plant or anything like that. It's just like, what would you like to see here if it could transition to a renewable type of use or business as usual under current zoning?
Janice, what was the current or previous use of the site?
The current use right now is a peaker plant.
And what is that?
It is a, um, plant, it's, uh, it goes on and off when there's energy, you know, drain on the system.
It's, it's an oil-fired electric plant.
Yes.
And, so you're going to go over this? Kevin, can we turn up the volume a little bit?
It was my understanding that...
Kevin, you need to raise it up a little bit.
P-Side was taking over this property, though.
We don't know that. But right now, the only, National Grid has not told us that. They're, they still own it and operate it and they will eventually do whatever they're going to do. But we'll have a study that said, well, we looked at this and here's what we saw.
What prompted the study? Did National Grid indicate that they might be vacating the property?
NYSERTA prompted it. They are studying all the peaker plants in the state to see about decommissioning that. They are going to be decommissioned eventually, so they were, they prompted towns across New York to, to study what, uh, alternate reuses.
And they paid for the study.
They paid for the study, they paid Ramble, you know, that was their, you know, deliverables went to NYSERTA. But we had the oversight and the participation and we participated with, we, you might recall, we created a committee.
Right.
And, and that included people in the community and also, uh, adjacent, the residential neighborhood. And, um, but they'll go through all that, the whole project overview. I just wanted to give you a, a, just a real brief intro and we'll get right to it.
But when you say that they're going to de, and NYSERTA is going to decommission all the peaker plants in the country, is that what you just said?
No, 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 NYSERTA is a state agency and...
In the state.
Over time, um, fossil fuel, you know, there's this, this sense that there's an energy transition. Rev is the governor's initiative, it's still alive and well. And that's where you're getting toward this, um, you know, carbon, neutral, carbon-free environment. And how do you do that? And looking at all the different infrastructure that's already there and how does that transition into, um, you know, a new way of, uh, producing and dealing with energy, heat pumps, solar, how would that look? And it gives you the space to be able to think about that without the pressure of somebody actually trying to do something. Usually, if someone comes in, they have a proposal and we're always reacting to that.
Mm-hmm.
In this case, it was just giving us the space to be able to think it through. Like, what we, what could they do? What should they do? What would we like to see? What is the neighborhood thing? What further information would we require? And Shelby's going to go through all of that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
And Emery, Emery Lee is here from Ramble as well, sorry, Emery.
No worries. Great, uh, so, yeah, so, uh, I'll try to speak loudly so you all can hear me. Um, but, yeah, wanting to just, yeah, say good morning and thank you all again for the opportunity to, uh, provide an update on our work on the just transition Southampton to eighty David White's Lane project. Um, this is the second town board briefing on this work. Um, some of you may remember earlier in the year, uh, January, um, we did, we did come forward to you and sort of provide just sort of an introduction to the work, to, uh, you know, the program and sort of what we intend to do, um, over the course of this year. So, um, you know, wanting to just, uh, yeah, speak to you again as we're wrapping up the project now and, uh, you know, uh, with the upcoming work. Shelby, if you want to jump into page five. Um, this is, uh, just a, a pretty, pretty brief, um, presentation today. You know, you know, you're very busy, uh, and probably have a passion down there with, with the good food. Um, just wanted to reintroduce ourselves, uh, at the top of the meeting and then provide the project briefing. So, go over, you know, the, the various activities we did, um, talk about the safe home, for migration components because that was a really critical piece of this and then share, um, some of the alternative reuse scenarios that, you know, out of the work that you did. Um, and then talk about just the next steps and have time for Q and A. Um, so, next slide, Shelby, the team. Uh, just as a refresher, um, it was the group, um, the look at the project. So, uh, myself and Shelby were, uh, very active on the day-to-day on this project and Janice and Seth have been fantastic to work with throughout. Um, this is a really, this is actually a pretty fun, fun project. Uh, we had our partners at Park Strategies, they're urban planning advisors and economic development, uh, economic and fiscal, um, analysis experts. So, yeah, this is, this is the group. Um, and, uh, yeah, we, um, also worked very extensively with a steering committee, as Janice mentioned. They just wanted to share sort of the individuals on the committee and their affiliation. Um, many of these names may be familiar to all. Like, the committee was also an invaluable resource for us, um, in terms of providing just some really hyperlocal insights. Um, a lot of folks see now this committee have some background in, um, you know, management base and just, you know, engineering base. It was, it was excellent, uh, to work, to work with this group. And we were really grateful for their time, um, that they invested in this. Next slide, project overview. Um, so, this is where we can talk a little bit about some of the sort of facets of, uh, the project's work. Um, if, maybe this is a little bit, it's a little bit, uh, there we go. Um, so, the just transition program, again, Janice just provided a brief overview, but, um, you know, at the risk of, um, not repeating too much, but wanted to just remind, uh, you all sort of what the program is about. So, it is across New York State, um, NYSERTA provides funding, um, you know, four sort of site reuse planning studies. Um, many of the facilities across the state, most of them are, uh, peaker plants, but they are all fossil fuel-powered, um, facilities. And, um, you know, the money goes to various, uh, types of planning activities. So, it's assessing, you know, possible site reuses, um, you know, looking ahead into the future, um, getting community input is a foundational piece of sort of all the, all the work. It's, it's a requirement of the scope of work for all the just transition projects. Uh, is that the community be engaged, um, the community be asked, um, you know, uh, questions about what they think should be there, um, you know, you know, making the community a part of this, uh, is, is really important. So, um, again, one thing I just want to highlight and, um, NYSERTA is very big on this too is it's not, you know, this program does not recommend decommissioning, there aren't recommendations for HUD about that process. It's not, you know, a plant closure program. It's to talk about, um, you know, into the future, um, when we're in a landscape where we're less reliant on fossil fuels for our, you know, power, for energy, when our grid is a little bit cleaner, um, you know, what will, what could be done with some of these sites? Um, so, you know, and I get, yeah, I think the CLCPA, the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, that, you know, this program is a big sort of, uh, pillar of advancing that overall sort of, um, initiative from the state government. And talk to the next slide. Um, so, yeah, moving in to talk about the site itself. Um, so, here's just a, a context map, uh, to show, you know, the, the project location. Um, if, you know, some of the things we did, um, in the process of completing this work is, uh, working on existing condition complete that included, that included a phase-one environmental site assessment um, to understand the challenges and opportunities on the site. Um, we worked on, um, possible alternative reuses, given it's, given existing land use conditions, the existing zoning of the site, um, and an economic impact, uh, analysis. So, looking at the number of jobs associated with the site now and potential, um, you know, for economic, uh, development and job creation, uh, with various types of reuse scenarios. Um, and then, yeah, community engagement throughout. And Shelby will talk a little bit more, um, about the specifics of what the engagement activities look like, uh, when we get to that point of the, the presentation. Next slide, Shelby, okay? So, assuming we've given a version to the site itself, um, you know, one thing, uh, we didn't have a town with any photos of the site, so, um, the National Grid was, they, they don't, they don't want, um, you know, many visitors on the site and, you know, don't allow any photos. But this is, this is an aerial, uh, view of the site in, in, a little over acres. Um, LI4D zoning, um, you know, as, as Janice explained, uh, Shelby explained, the facility is used to meet power demand. Um, so, yeah, it's, reminds, uh, you know, to avoid brownouts or blackouts, um, you know, that can take on, uh, if we did supplement, um, you know, sort of terrain on the grid. Um, National Grid is contractually obligated, uh, from LI4D to continue to operate the facility until twenty twenty-eight. So, again, you know, um, to sort of, uh, support what, what Janice was saying earlier. This is really, you know, future-looking, forward-looking. It, there's no real development pressure at the moment, um, you know, it's, it's nice to have the kind of space and time to think through. and listen really intently um to stakeholders to say, well, what what could be done there? Um, and maybe which, what's the need, um, what are the needs of how could this site respond to those needs and what can we do? Um, as far as the existing infrastructure, our our engineer moved into phase one. On the site, you know, there there is a gas turbine generator and above ground storage tank. Um, and sort of a containment uh area, area and fuel transfer on the site. So that's kind of the existing um infrastructure, one from the facility standpoint on the site today. Um, next slide, Shelby. And then Shelby, I'm gonna pass it to you. I'm gonna do the project summary. Just wanted to give you a sort of what we're gonna do and sort of the subsequent plan through these alternatives.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Emery. Um, just a quick tech check. Can everyone hear me a little better now?
Yes.
X one. Okay, I got the headset. I think, yeah, that that might have been the issue earlier. Um, yeah, good morning all. Thank you. Thanks for your time today. And Emery, thanks for that um wonderful overview. Um, yeah, so just to kind of dig into the details a little bit more here, um, there are really, there are kind of five tasks um distributed throughout the course of this project, but really three main ones um that kind of contained our technical scope and the community engagement. Um, so I'll just speak to those a little bit more here. Um, but but kind of at a high level, the study took place over the course of um thirteen months. So started in September twenty twenty-three, um and it's it's just wrapping up um this month. Um, and we had, you know, project management and kind of stakeholder engagement throughout. Um, but we're really kicked off the study with um kind of a technical understanding of the site. Um, so we did an existing conditions analysis, uh which included an assessment of the geographic, socioeconomic, um zoning context, also a review of, you know, local, regional, state planning initiatives um that that currently exist or might be coming down the pipeline, um just so we can kind of understand how how certain factors might impact or inform the site. Um, and then as as Emery mentioned, we also did a phase one site assessment. Um, for the stakeholder engagement, um we we had this kind of throughout and um I'll I'll, I have a couple of slides after this that that sort of speak through that process a bit more. Um, so I'll provide some additional details there. Um, but just wanted to highlight, we did have two um public workshops. And these were um, you know, quite strategic when we did these um in the project. Really wanting to align that with our alternative reuse analysis so that we could, you know, bring the community, bring the stakeholders in, sort of at the onset of, okay, here's the brainstorm. Let's get all the ideas on the table. Um, and have that have that kind of be the foundation of um what we further refined into the three, three reuse scenarios, which we'll cover um today as well. Um, and then the last task here is um the site reuse planning report. So I'm just kind of reporting out um all of our findings and compiling that into a graphic report.
Just on the, just sorry, just on the previous slide, yeah. Um, so obviously you had a public, it looks like you had a public workshop um in April. And it it's going into May, is that correct? Is it's like what?
Oh.
I'm trying to understand the.
Yeah, this is maybe just um the the graphic issue. Um.
Okay.
This next slide might might speak to it a little bit better.
Okay.
Oh, we don't have the exact dates here, but but yeah, um, the April public workshop, um, I think it was mid-April. I I remember probably the fact date, but um the the July one was July thirty-first. So it was, they were just single days. The first one was virtual.
Okay.
And the second was in person.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question. Um, so so the principle of this study um was really to have community participation and engagement throughout this process um to generate transparent and open lines of communication with stakeholders. Um, and that really supports kind of the intent of the study at large, which is is a visioning exercise with the community to think about, you know, what what the future of the site looks like, but also kind of what, you know, what can we imagine um South Hampton's future needs are um later down the line. So to facilitate that, um, really one of the first steps of the study is to create a stakeholder engagement plan. Um, and that's that's kind of all the um, the different events you see listed here. So as I mentioned, we had two public workshops, one in the spring and one in the summer. Um, we had a steering committee uh that we met with five monthly. Stakeholder interviews, um we had, I think, about five of these, um really kind of at the beginning of the project to um meet with South Hampton staff, um Village of South Hampton, National Grid as well, and understand the existing conditions and challenges. Um, we had a community survey in the spring of twenty twenty-four, um which I'll all kind of sample some some of the responses from that in the next slide, um as well as a project website, really to provide um kind of evergreen information about this project to the community and and also make sure um folks knew how to contact us and 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 others as well. So um, the survey, and there's just a couple of questions, sample questions here that we've included. Um, it was it was a bit longer than this. Um, but but pulled a few key ones in here. Um, and it was made public on March eleventh and closed on April thirtieth, um for about a month and a half. Um, hosted digitally on the town's um CRC platform and it received about forty-five responses. Uh, overall, the respondents expressed interest in um the future of the site that that offers community benefits, um supports local clean energy generation. Um, and then, you know, folks were also, and you can kind of see that in this middle question here, folks also had some concerns about increases in vehicle traffic, um noise and odor were were really the two main concerns as far as um what the future site uh might might present in terms of existing or in terms of additional um challenges. Um, but yeah, you can see here, you know, the community benefit piece, um clean energy generation were ranked quite high. Um, and then when asked, you know, what would be most appropriate for the site? Uh, maybe solar field and community facility, um as well as uh, you know, light industrial park, public work facility and special trade contractor. Did get some responses there as well. Um, and then to the right here, um just pulled a couple um sample uh quotes that we did here during the first public workshop. Um, and again, kind of similar themes coming through here. So um one, one attendee had said, if there was a solar facility at the site somewhere else uh could create opportunities for discounts on, you know, people's utility bills, thinking about answer that future energy transition. Um, another said, if this site becomes a green energy use, it's a good opportunity to build a demo site or some sort of educational programming for clean energy programs. Um, someone else had said something related to green energy and educational component. Um, and then finally, um, we heard that a uh, there's a need for light industrial space um kind of within the town too. And and this is also something that was reflected from our stakeholder um interviews with with Camps App. Um, so to be true priority, we, and then, you know, very directly in terms of reuse scenarios, we did analyze for the study. Um, and I'll I'll provide a brief overview of those in in just a moment. Um, so there's really three primary reuse strategies, um as well as a combined option, actually, that emerged from um our second public workshop. Um, I'll just reiterate though, you know, our intent for this study is not to recommend any of these over over one another. Um, you know, I think we, in this process, really are valuing flexibility in future decision-making and it's especially crucial, um since, you know, as we know, the operation and timeline for this site, its its potential future closure, um and sale is, it's just not known at this time. So um, you know, we wanted to really keep keep kind of the the options open and allow for flexibility. So I think that will will potentially come through. Um, so the first alternative reuse scenario um that we looked into is what we're calling the Green Commerce Park. Um, and this integrates sustainable science principles, circular economy strategies, um and innovation, create environment friendly and resource efficient commercial development. Um, and I'll note this this qualifies with LI forty. Um, this both this reuse and and all of the others as well. So we did only look to um LI forty compliant zoning for for potential reuses. Um, so uh kind of what's featured in this reuse um is sort of a variety of synergistic um programming. So this includes a light industrial manufacturing, um parking kind of with solar canopy. Uh, there's a green energy demonstration slash education center onsite generation, um as well as, and this is a little bit harder to see on the graphic, but a community hiking trail. Um, so really envisioning this as um kind of a combination of um, you know, different synergistic uses and and one that that invites the community in. Uh, reuse scenario two is a light industrial subdivision. And this would essentially carve these looking um eight hundred acre lot into eight smaller lots, which would be developed and used for business uses, um again, you know, permitted under LI forty zoning. Um, and would provide that uh, you know, that needed area for development of new um special trade contractors, some hardware, exhaust and electrical and and different types of supply stores. Um, and one other thing that kind of emerged um through community feedback for for this reuse is the potential to use one of the lots um for right shift working as well to help alleviate some of the traffic concerns.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
The white boxes that are on all of them at the top, those are the existing stores?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right?
Yeah.
Those are existing.
Okay.
Commercial, enterprise.
Okay. And then the dotted line is obviously a property line of this.
Yes, exactly. Those are not additional. Those are existing.
Okay.
Yeah, we wanted to kind of keep this a little bit more sketchy, um because it was quite conceptual. Um, so so yeah, some of these are a bit more illustrative than than kind of technical drawing. Okay, and then in reuse scenario three, um this is a district energy system. Um, and you know, the the concept behind this one is that National Grid's existing fossil fuel fire generating plant would be converted into a community district thermal energy system. And um, you know, essentially the idea is for the heat that's generated from the system could be distributed to neighboring big uh to neighboring properties and buildings in the adjacent highway business area. So for instance, um, you know, the four existing uh businesses that are pictured here could kind of receive that supplemental heating, but also um, you know, a lot of the businesses kind of in the adjacent area. Um, and, you know, would would instead provide kind of that that clean um clean energy, clean thermal um energy towards the heating supply, um again, in line with kind of New York's takeovers and um uh as well as um South Hampton's, some of South Hampton's climate priorities.
I don't know very much about that thermal energy systems.
Yeah, I'll I'll say too, we looked at two different systems for this. Um, so so one was ground source heat pumps. Um, and then really what's pictured here is the um air source heat pump option, which um just based off kind of high level um facility analysis, we found to be quite a bit more efficient and cost effective than the ground source heat pump option for this location. Um, but really the head of concept behind district heating is that you're able to, um, you know, as you can see here, kind of centralize um a clean, clean um energy system that is then distributed um sort of within a kind of smaller district area, as opposed to being kind of brought back to the grid and distributed widely. Um, so the the sort of energy source is is kept quite close to, or the energy distribution is kept quite close to where it's sourced.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
How does that run? Off batteries?
Oops, sorry. This keeps jumping around.
No, it's electric.
It's electric?
Um, so it's ran off air source heat pumps and I'll I'll be the first to say with my technical knowledge of kind of the energy systems, um you know, we'll we'll, we've had a uh some folks from our energy team really running the analysis on this. But um my my understanding kind of about the the planner is that it is able to take the heat from from kind of the air supply or from the ground um and kind of capture that heat in a in a sustainable way that isn't reliant on, you know, fossil fuels. Um, or even in this case, you know, solar energy or wind. Um, and the idea there being, you know, for instance, to the ground source heat pumps, kind of the ground is a very stable temperature. It's always around fifty degrees. So you're kind of able to use that heating, use that as the heating supply in the winter and as a cooling supply in the summer.
So basically, it runs off electricity?
Not that very soon.
But you can transport thermal energy in a loop of district it to all the different uh commercial enterprises.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, there's no battery.
There's no battery storage to from the electric to run it.
That's right.
Not as proposed.
Because people want to know that.
And then our final reuse option here, um is what we're calling the combined reuse alternative. And it this really emerged from feedback provided by the community during the second public workshop. Um, and it and also from the steering committee and kind of emphasizes the benefits of synergizing elements from each reuse option. Um, so the combined scenario integrates the Green Energy Center, um from the first scenario, light industrial businesses from the second, um and, you know, also incorporates a district thermal energy system, one that might be maybe smaller than the originally proposed one, um but still has that benefit of providing energy um to the surrounding surrounding businesses and and potentially for this one to, you know, future studies might look at um how we could make this entire site net zero, for instance, by by really um taking advantage of the onsite energy generation. So as we kind of wrap up here, um, you know, wrap up our portion of the study in the next four weeks, um our final steps are to incorporate feedback that we received from the advisory committee, um who who have reviewed the report. Um, and also any feedback that you all provided today into our final um two eighty David White link, site reuse planning study. Um, and then that uh once approved will be shared with the community and posted posted online on our on our project website. Um, and I think that's, yes, that's all we have for now. Um, but but wanted to take some time for any questions you might have, anything you all want to dig into further.
I do have, I have a question. Um, so in the decommissioning process, um will power generation um when needed be affected? Um, once the peaker plant, I mean, obviously this is looking down the road here, but you know, what what does that look like? I mean, from my understanding, this peaker plant is operates when there is a blackout of some kind and, you know, uh people are out of power. Uh, so if this were to be in the process of transitioning, what what is the sort of reliability of getting something up and running to make sure that power is not?
Before you answer that question, it it should be noted that peaker plants are also used at at high demand times during the summertime. People are running air conditioning. These things kick on. Um, additionally, a peaker plant also has to come on every week to to run the generator. So it doesn't, you know, to make sure the thing runs. So that is a significant amount of, you know, hours that are being used in addition to the ninety that's is um that's indicated in this brochure.
Right, and perhaps that, perhaps that should be indic-, you know, a specific section of the plan that is produced to indicate that.
You mean it runs more than the ninety hours um?
No, it doesn't have more than ninety hours a year.
So what are you all saying?
If he says it goes away, where do you get those ninety hours from?
Oh, I see.
And the ultimate capacity is through the grid.
Right.
And then the grid has its offsets and different things. So it all gets weighed out beyond us through the ISO and all that.
Okay.
But it has to.
Yeah, and so I can add to a little bit to that too. Um, so so as we said, National Grid, you know, has their contract with LICA, which is in place until twenty twenty-eight. Um, but even if National Grid decides to sell and LICA, you know, is approves that, actually, um so the um national independent energy, I I don't quite remember the standard of the.
Independent service operator, independent system operators.
Oh, sustain, you, Emery.
Yeah.
Um, the reviews, but they would have the final say. Um, and they're the ones who are kind of looking over the grid holistically and would um, you know, have oversight to ensure that those peak power, um peak power moments are are being supplied. peak power moments are, are being supplied.
That's my question.
Well, okay, so back to my point about the peaker plant and its usage, I've, I've driven past that thing a lot, you know, and it's, it's running and it's, you know, I could see the heat coming up through the trees and, you know, it's, it's got a, my estimate is a twenty thousand gallon fuel oil storage tank onsite and, and this thing runs to augment energy production. Because of my previous work on zoning boards and plumbing and heating, I know that all generating capacity has to run tests every week. And so that was my point with, you know, this thing has to turn on every week just to make sure that the systems are operable and they're running and ready to go at a moment's notice. So I think ninety hours is probably low, but it's in the ballpark. I like the alternatives a lot.
Well, at some point, we'll put all this and, you know, to have it as one of our, you know, a planning study in some day in the next, you know, post twenty twenty eight, someone is going to say, what can we do here? Because that's all they, you know, people commented with. And we can pull out these plans and say, well, here's some ideas, or we can work on, maybe one of these ideas is really worth partnering with National Grid and like moving toward it together. And you have plenty of time to forge those alliances. So it's one way or the other, either you're going to react to it or try to plan ahead.
Mm-huh.
So it would be great to plan ahead and at least with the community support, say this is something that we can look at as time goes on.
Has the village chimed into this, I saw that there were village, people from the village there, but has the village board themselves chimed into this discussion?
No, this is in the town Southampton, so, but we are happy to share all these findings with the village.
Yeah, I think, you know, you know, irrespective, I think it's important that they understand what the, you know, implications are of it, just in case, what we're looking at.
Sure, sure. And that's why we had some representatives on the committee, so they were part of it.
Once this is out of draft form, we would like to present this to P S E G and the village, so.
Okay.
And, yeah, share.
Share it at least.
I think what Councilwoman McMurdo was referencing is we had a meeting with P S E G at some point months ago, and when they, they had mentioned that if this ever does, if it ever is decommissioned by National Grid, that they have a right of first refusal on all the National Grid properties and that they would certainly want to exercise it. But that was just a, you know, remark that they made and I don't know if anybody ever followed up on that.
Well, I think that would also weigh into Michael's point of if they have the generation they need somewhere else, they wouldn't need this site, but they may need this site for future, for generation.
But this is great to have, in case they don't, at least we're not running around, you know, the last minute trying to figure out what's, would be a good thing to go here.
There isn't a lot of places left where they could come up with generation sites.
Well, P S E G has all kinds, well, I mean, first of all, who's P S E G in all this? Is it Leica that we're talking about?
Yeah, Leica, really.
And they have public, you know, if we, if they had some community benefit scenarios in their dealings with P S C to generate what they need to gen, you know, there may be room for us to be able to say, hey, we want this green educational center as something to showcase all the different things we're talking about and trying to do and, and have a central location. And maybe that's something we can get to with that or whoever. But it is something that the community said, this would be awesome if they had this.
No, no, if hypothetically, if we were to move forward on a, you know, a scenario, one of these scenarios, obviously it's a lot of investment, you know, they're talking about a trail and, you know, carving out of, you know, it looks like streets. So, I mean, I would assume because this is, this is being sort of driven by some of the, you know, climate action matters that we're looking at, i- is there funding that would be obviously available for that?
Well, as you know, we keep getting further and further with our Clean Energy Communities program, so there's, you know, as we get those monies in our, our line item for sustainability projects, this may be something that you say, hey, we have money.
Wouldn't be funded by us, though, this would be a private.
No, this is all private and considered private. But if there is some synergy in the future with, with some collaboration between the municipality getting a grant for Green Education Center on one of the seven or eight lots in subdivision, you know, that's what I'm talking about.
My, the impetus of my question is that this isn't, wouldn't be necessarily taxpayer-funded. This would be, this would be-
No, no, grant funding and, you know, different community benefit funds. These private investors, you know, so, yeah.
Okay.
Janice, is it safe to say that this is a fossil fuel generated electricity plant that's being taken offline because of onlining of green energy alternatives from, you know, the wind farms offshore?
Bramble, you want to say that answer?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So, yeah, I mean, I think what, what, you know, I would say in terms of, you know, that question, you know, I would say wind is just one form of sort of renewable energy, but in general, the P L C P A, the kind of leadership and, you know, Community Protection Act, that, that sort of legislation at the state level, you know, they're driving investments across the state in different types of renewable energy or clean energy sources, right? So could be, could be supplemented by wind, for example, especially when, you know, where Southampton is located, county, you know, there's, you know, wind farms offshore there. But, yeah, I mean, I think the thinking is that, you know, this plant could come offline at some point in the future, if the variables align, if, you know, the site owner is on board, you know, and that the grid is balanced in such a way that, you know, there's confidence that all the power demands and needs will be met for the town. But, yeah, I think, I think it's, you know, the idea that ideally when that happens, there's clean energy to support or to supplement what that peaker plant would have been providing. Because the idea, I think the state's role in term is for our grid to be clean in downtown . So that maybe was a long-winded answer to your question, but, yeah, did that, did that make sense?
It certainly does. I believe that's the case.
Even in the business as usual, just regular old subdivision in L I forty, because it's eight acres, L I forty is one acre lot, so we just did a straight up, like this is a little subdivision, these are just subdivision roadways, like almost like what's across the street at Mariner Drive, but all of the buildings have solar on. So it's like, you know, even if you did business as usual, there'd still be some, you know, a renewable component.
Yeah.
And Mike, just to follow up on, there is a full economic analysis of each one of these reuse options. Who is going, who would be the leader, the developers and the partnership? What are the costs associated with it? So the, the report does get in-depth into the price, there is a price for each one of these.
Right, good addition. What about a traffic analysis on some of these?
That is discussed and each one, some of them have short, that's a shortcoming, some of them are, it's better adapted for less, to mitigate for traffic issues, so.
And, and we would definitely recommend, you know, full traffic feasibility analysis kind of as a further step later down the line when, when reading these. Yeah, if it was a reality, that's, can you kind of think through qualitative impacts by a full sort of traffic feasibility, so it was not part of this assessment.
Okay.
So we'll pass around the draft report in case the board has any input or comments before it's finalized. So we'll get that to them, right?
Yeah.
That's right. And one last thing I just wanted to add is, it's kind of remaining a compliment from N Y S R D A, is that they were very happy with the outcomes of this study and, you know, wanted to feature the town's report on this, you know, Just Transition Southampton Project as a case study project for their overall Just Transition Program.
That's great.
Oh, that's so nice.
So they were just super pleased with, with how the work went and, you know, the, you know, way that the town was such a great partner and the members of the community were engaged. So I just wanted to show a lot of you all, because they've established what the town do, you know, in N Y S R D A.
That's very nice to hear, and this looks like some really good collaboration. So thank you for presenting it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, what is this? Was this in everybody's packet?
No.
But you read it, it's a pretty good chunk.
Thank you. Let's move just placing yours.
Okay. All right, I did see Cara peeking in. Here you are, just in time. Our next topic is an update on pro housing community, and Cara Bach, our Director of Housing and Community Services, is here with us, along with in-person representatives from the Division of Housing and Community Renewal.
Sure.
Yes, let us bring some extra cheers up. Our apologies, we're running a little behind schedule today. Thanks for coming in.
We need one more. Hello? Good, how are you?
So I'd like to introduce to the board Kathleen McCadden Benjamin, who is the Chief of Staff for New York State H C R. And we have Paris, who is the Council for New York State H C R. And you all know me, I'm Cara Bach, the Director of Housing for the town. So just to do a little bit of a recap with regard to this pro housing community designation. As you know, pro housing community designation is a reward program from New York State. It is a program that rewards local governments who are working hard to address New York's housing crisis. And how do they do that reward? Well, they, they do that by allowing those local governments that are pro housing communities and only those local governments that are pro housing communities to apply for certain discretionary grant funding. So there are eight grants that are available. There are three that would probably mostly apply to our township. Is a Long Island Investment Fund, which provides grant funding between two million and twenty million dollars to fund infrastructure, site development, site design, engineering for multifamily projects and for redevelopment of related areas. Those projects need up to a hundred housing units, but they can be bundled, so they can be different projects throughout the town that we bundle together to make up a hundred units.
So just to clarify that, so that would mean if we were to get approved for a funding, we could apply that funding to different projects. So, you know, fifty units there, twenty units there, what have you.
Yeah, exactly.
But they would probably have to be in the same community?
The town of Southampton.
The town of Southampton.
Oh, I mean, really?
And we've already done this.
Well, we have-
With Spion and Tuckahoe.
Yes, so, right, we have bundled, the state allowed us to bundle Spion Commons and Sandy Hollow when the town worked with the Housing Authority and Georgia Green on those projects. Yep. There's a New York Forward program that's grant money up to ten million dollars for projects such as adaptive reuse, building renovation and redevelopment, and for projects that enhance that small town feeling. There's a capital improvement grant up to three million dollars for new or reconstruction of infrastructure, including water, sewer, and those, those kind of things, projects that have an economic benefit to the community. So how do we become a pro housing community? There are two ways. So the first way is the town must be able to show through its housing permitting process that permits have increased, that housing stock has increased by one percent over the past year. Or they can show that increase of three percent over the past three years. If we can't meet that, there is another way, a second way. And the second way is for the town to pass a pro housing resolution. And in that pro housing resolution, there are certain pledges that this town makes. And those pledges are that it will streamline permitting process for affordable housing. We're already doing this. We're doing this through, we streamline the permitting process with the E D U's. We have hired a designated building inspector to move that along. We can also show New York State the second pledge, which is adopt policies to further fair housing. We've done that through our C H F project plan. We have programs for the disabled, for the workforce, for seniors. We have, the next pledge is to incorporate regional housing needs into our planning decisions. Land management is doing that with the county and working together to make sure that we have housing for the disabled in our, in our developments. The, the next one is increased development capacity for residential uses. We've done that with that N R P in K I O, the Change of Zone, we've met that there. Enact policies that encourage a broad range of housing developments. The C H F project plan has programs for all of that. We have programs for A D U's, we have programs for rental units, we have programs for adaptive reuse. So it seems like we've met all of these pledges that the state is requiring us to do through this resolution.
And at the very least procedurally and legislatively, through the C H F project plan in particular.
So I got a question, might be a dumb question, but since we did all this, why do we need to sign up for that? What, what's the benefit? Because I'm, I'm afraid that down the line that we're going to lose Home Rule. And, you know, I'm big on Home Rule, I'm being untrusted, and I really don't trust New York State on other stuff, so why should we do this?
So the benefit to doing this, the benefit, we are already doing these things as you mentioned, right?
So why do we need them to do, keep on doing it? Are we going to get more money? Because nothing's free.
Exactly.
Nothing's all free, something always comes with a cost. And I don't want to take a, you know, take a, you know, put the town at advantage of the cost to the freeholders.
Yeah, so exactly. So we cannot, unless we apply for this and become a pro housing community, we cannot apply for those state grants that I just mentioned. So we have to be a pro housing community in order to be eligible to apply for those funds.
But you just said we were getting grants. Are we going to get more grants?
Not anymore, right? Is that correct? There's been a change.
Correct. So for the programs that she particularly mentioned, the Long Island Investment Fund, New York Forward, it's required that you are a pro housing community in order to be funded.
It used to be that you got extra points, right? But then in April that changed and now it's required?
Yes.
I asked a week ago for the budget language that changed the program and I still have not received that. I'd like to compare it to what's on the state website, which is just the executive order, and seeing that that's changed and it wasn't listed on the website, leads me to again question, you know, how transparent this all is and what we're signing up for, because if you're, if you're basing it on the governor's executive order and that's not really what it's based on anymore and that has all changed, because I came to a public hearing and I based all of my comments off of that executive order, because on your website it says those are the guidelines and that's what it is, and there was all this, you know, you were a pro housing community and then there were tiers, but it didn't specify how you got into those tiers. So I would like to, before we go anywhere with this, I would like to see the actual wording behind and what is involved in recertification, the whole gamut, not just, you know, do we pass a resolution or do we meet this by, by merits of how many units? I want to see the wording and the document that says this is what you're signing up for, this is what the requirements are, this is what you're entitled to, this is what you can't do. I want to know if, if like our housing authority can still apply for grants even though maybe we can't as a pro housing community, because in the governor's executive order, it was only, only municipalities could become and it didn't affect outside agencies? I don't know if they're, they're affected now?
No, that's correct, only it's municipalities. And the funding that they listed for pro housing discretionary grants, and it's about eight on the list now, and the housing authority could apply for those grants.
They still can regardless of what we do with this.
So the executive order said to set up the program, and then you're saying in April the program changed, and that's what we, we want to see, you know, where is that set for?
The budget appropriation language. I'm pulling that, I'm going to get that.
So in reality, if we don't sign up, her program can't apply for the grants, but Curtis' program can apply for the grants.
Or Housing Authority.
Yes, yes, he could still apply for money, but I would imagine he would need other funds from your, from the town. He would need other funds, a lot of projects require multiple funding sources.
Yes, what we've been doing. Because you know, I'm pro housing, I just want to be very cautious.
I understand.
How about private developers who have initiatives throughout the town who might apply for money? Would us being a pro housing, this town of Southampton being a pro housing community, would that help them?
Would definitely help them.
Would it, could it possibly be detrimental to their applications if we opt to not go forward as a pro housing community? And they ask for funds from the state to do projects in the town of Southampton?
What we're seeing across the board, across the state, cost of construction, infrastructure cost, pre-development costs have increased dramatically. So you're always needing to find multiple funding sources or new streams of funding to help make projects happen and to close gaps. And that's really what we've seen with the Long Island Investment Fund, New York Forward. And the town would not be able to take advantage and provide those resources to developers if you're not a pro housing community.
This is Curtis Heisman, he's the Executive Director of our Southampton Town Housing Authority. I've asked him to go.
So I just had a quick question. You mentioned that we as a Housing Authority can't apply, but those applications would be for projects that are located in Southampton. So since they're landing in Southampton, does the town not participating as pro housing affect the award? Because it's within the municipality, it's not a participant of pro housing.
I don't believe so, but we can double down to check. The Housing Authority is not a municipality. This program is again geared towards localities that have zoning authority. It's not directed towards other government entities. It's really about asking municipalities and localities to kind of make investments in their housing stock.
So why is it in zoning? Because when you say zoning, it puts a red flag up, like, do you want us to have to rezone a certain parcel of work? It has, instead of it's supposed to have two houses or a house and apartment to have 30 houses, 30 apartments on it? That's what I'm afraid of.
Or you could say there's a manufactured zone that could be changed to residential.
You didn't answer my question. Is, are you, why are us to opt zone to have more apartments on one piece of property, which is supposed to only have, say, two apartments and a dwelling on it?
We are not requiring any specific kinds of zoning changes.
Okay, that's, when you said zoning, that's why I asked.
Yes, but we are gearing, basing this in zoning authority because zoning is a huge part of our housing crisis. We, as the state agency, we finance and preserve affordable housing. We can't create all of the workforce and affordable housing that we need here in the state. But you all in Suffolk County have done that by requiring 10% of your housing units to be affordable. But to create more opportunities for that, many localities have to change or maybe modify zoning. For example, there could be a place in your town that's zoned currently for commercial or for manufacturing that you may want to convert and allow residential. Those are also the kinds of examples we're highlighting in the resolution. We're not advocating or requiring any specific changes. The resolution is meant to be kind of a statement of values and a menu of options that we'd like localities to look to, to look at making changes to increase their housing supply in a way that you see fit, that makes sense for your community.
And moving forward, would there be any requirements from the state? Moving forward, if we were to become a pro housing community, would there be any requirements or mandates from the state for us to increase our housing at a certain percentage?
If you're, if you're participating in the pro housing communities program, we are asking people to increase housing supply.
Which is the goal.
Which is the goal. But it's not required. So if you don't do it, there is no penalty. We're not coming back to recapture funds or take grants from you, that's not the point.
Could we still preserve the pro housing designation if we don't meet certain criteria?
We are being as very, we're being very flexible with people because we understand that communities like yours are making the right steps. You're allowing ADUs, you're one of our ADU One Plus partners. We have 35 ADUs in the pipeline for homeowners here. We are working with you on a number of affordable housing projects. And I know you all, given just what Kara just said, from the Coast Guard Station to other projects that you're trying to be innovative and pro housing. We want to make sure that communities that are trying to do the right thing, that we're here to provide the resources you need to do that.
Kathleen, just one last question that I have on this specific aspect. Some of the funding pools aren't just toward density or the building of, you know, homes or units. It's also facade improvements, correct? There's other types of, because there's some.
Main Street grants?
Some of the hamlets don't want to see, you know, an abundance of buildings, you know, like Hampton Bays in particular. They, but what they do want to see, however, is facade improvements and other types of, you know, aesthetic improvements to help, you know, bring up, you know, the value of the community and.
A Main Street grant, which is administered by HCR, is a great way for a hamlet and other smaller localities to kind of energize and reinvigorate maybe their downtowns or main corridors to bring more residents, maybe more people to visit their businesses and restaurants. That's definitely part of it. There's also a fund that ESD administers exclusively for pro housing communities that's just for infrastructure. So I know that's a big issue here. And that program, I would imagine, it was very oversubscribed and will be back next year as part of the governor's executive budget. Communities responded really, really well to that fund.
And infrastructure can be water mains, STP, sewage treatment facilities, or infrastructure.
What about transportation funding? Is there any transportation funding tied to any of this?
There is, there's some DOT, there is a DOT grant attached to the Pro Housing Community Fund to help modernize some of the roads, signals. We can get a DOT rep here if that's something that you're interested in.
Could that be used for rail or flight rail?
I don't know, I'll find out.
So one of my biggest concerns, though, is still the, the way that this has all rolled out. The way that the governor has already tried to override local zoning, that went over not very well.
Two years ago.
I understand, and then last year, there was a, last year there was a proposal on religious properties to allow 50 units per acre, which is extremely dense in an area that has a lot of religious zone properties that, you know, they're not doing as well as they could and could definitely use some income stream. And then this came out, this pro housing community, and it was this ask for five years of your planning and zoning data in exchange for prioritization for these grants. And if you wanted to use these grants for housing, didn't matter, there was no prioritization. Which makes sense to me, if your goal is to build housing, why would you require any extra steps for communities that are trying to get grants to build housing? And then this changed in the budget. It didn't show up on the website, so none of that wording is there. There was all these things in the executive order about tiers. And all of these grants that, you know, it sounds like, you know, they're being spoken about, like, there, if you become a pro housing, you can apply for these and your chances are very good. These are all very competitive grants. There's no guarantee that we will get any of these grants. So I would like to, before this town proceeds with giving the state five years of our zoning and building permitting data, I would like to find out all of the information on this. And that's all I've ever asked, is for full transparency on what we're signing up for, what is required, what will be, because it's changed just from the executive order to the budget. There's no saying that this isn't going to change again. And then upon renewal, all of a sudden, there's another, like, well, you, so I mean, I'm like, if we're not applying for any of these grants, and it's so easy to become a pro housing community, why not wait till we're ready to apply for any of these grants to sign up? If it's really truly worth what we want to do? Because we have a community housing fund, I'd like to finish. Because we have a community housing fund, because this community sees the true value in our zoning and having control of our local zoning, that they said, you know what? We'll put money in so that we can control the local zoning and we can make these projects affordable in perpetuity. And they know that housing is a priority, and they do want to see it, but it has to be in a way that fits with our community. And when you mention things like changing manufacturing zones to residential zones, we also are extremely limited on light industrial. We, I mean, we are tapped out, I mean, I could never see doing that in this town. And I know that that was just an example. But I just, I would be stupid if I didn't question wanting to see the entire package before signing on the dotted line.
So one of the points that you bring up, Councilwoman, is about the building and permits data. If you could address that a little bit, but before you do, I mean, this is, these are public documents that could be foiled and, you know.
They can get our zoning onto online.
If I could, right? I mean, this is public and it's there. And so, you know, what's the rationale behind that? Because it's causing a lot of, you know, issues.
This data is readily available. The census collects this information. And when we were talking to people in 2022 about the compact and using these, the census data to talk to people about their housing supply, many communities said, that's not accurate, this is not correct, this is not an accurate reflection of what our community has done. So that's part of the reason why we created this opportunity for communities to submit their own data. We're not using it to punish people or to, in a nefarious way. The point is to give accurate information so that communities can have transparent and open conversations about their housing needs for their community and put it in an accessible form. We have a dashboard that you can see on our website and the governor's website. And if you click on the Housing Statistics Dashboard, you're able to see a number of different levels of data about housing and about communities, whether it's school data, whether it's homes, whether it's, what else is up there? I think there's a couple of other different facts. But all of the information there is pointed, the point of it is to give communities opportunities to have transparent, open discussions about what they feel their communities need. And that's the reason for the data submission. We really want to allow communities to put, have accurate information and easily accessible map that communities can use.
So as of right now, the only requirement going forward is that each year the information is updated?
Correct. We used to resubmit the building and permit data.
So my issue, though, is that was for prioritization on grants. And at that point in time, only 20 communities in the state of New York had supplied the state with their data. So I'm not the only one that has issues with this. Then it became mandatory to apply for the grants, that you had to give your data. And now there is an influx of people because they want to apply for these grants. And it's just, I question the fact that when it was just for prioritization, there were only 20 communities in the entire state of New York that wanted to give the state their data. And this is data like who applied for a permit, what they applied for, when they applied for the permit, when it was approved, the site plan data. That's a lot of data for our, for our town to come up with and put into the state's format. It's, like you said, you can go online, you can get our zoning code, you could foil all this data. But that's on you to do that and get that data and put it into your database. We are now doing that work. So, and I think it's just an extreme amount of work. If you wanted to know how many permits we issued, something like this, no problem whatsoever. But when you get into who, who applied for a permit, when it was applied for, when it was issued, the site planned, all of that, it gets to be a bit much.
I think on that end, I would just say if you are interested in pursuing the designation, we have worked with municipalities, it is a lot of work, especially if you have a smaller staff or if you've issued a lot of permits, we fully understand that. Just to be super clear, we're only asking for permitting data that increased or decreased housing units. So we're not asking for things like renovations or garages or anything like that. But if you're, if it's overwhelming or way too burdensome, and it has been for some places, we're being as flexible as possible to collect maybe certain types of data or certain years. So if you get to that point, we're just asking you to have a conversation with us because we really are looking to work with municipalities.
And we're working towards getting some new software into the building department so that could help to streamline.
Yeah, our staff is in the process of trying to get our building department online, and, you know, it's just a lot.
Yeah.
This, that's been one of the things that has been wonderful about this interaction with municipalities is understanding what communities need. And one of the things was technology and software solutions. And those are the kinds of things that we can then take back and take to the governor's office as we think about ways to enhance the program. That's how we're thinking about how to help communities, not to be, not to penalize or to require or to dominate local or home rule. We're thinking about how we can be a better partner to communities who want to grow. So we're thinking about ways we can find or be a partner and help you find other technology solutions. Are there other kinds of grants and discretionary funds that the state can offer to better assist you? Are there demolition, you know, monies or other ways that we can streamline even the MTA disposition for transit-oriented development projects? Like, we're really trying to be better partners. And that's what we're trying to gain through these interactions and relationships that we're building with localities.
And as far as I know, there's 11 municipalities now on Long Island that are part of the pro housing community. East Hampton, Brookhaven Towns, Village of Sand Harbor, Riverhead Town, that's my understanding.
And just on the other townships, Brookhaven, we met with Brookhaven Town just to kind of see, you know, what their approach was. Me and the supervisor sat with them with Kara's office. And they told us actually, because, you know, there were some concerns about whether or not this is going to mandate housing. And we want to just confirm, like, you know, because I know Brookhaven is very cautious of that as well. And, you know, they said obviously not. One of the things that they set up, and I don't know if this is a requirement from the state law, but there is, the town is supposed to set up a committee, is that correct? As sort of a board of appointed members of the community to help with the application process or the determination process?
That's what they decided to do.
That's what they decided, so.
Because they had a very large project they were working through.
Right.
So we could do the same thing to eswage, you know, and reduce some of the concern that, you know, we don't want this to grow out of control. If we wanted to, we have a CHF Advisory Board that acts as sort of an intermediary between the board and various housing projects. We could potentially set up another committee or use that same committee potentially as.
Absolutely. I mean, we, again, are not telling people, we understand that one size does not fit all and that one plan or housing development that works in one community may not work in another. We are asking people to think about and make sure you're considering the needs of people who already live here, the nurses, the teachers, the seniors who want to remain in the community but have, just don't have enough options. And regionally, we know that this is a problem that has to be solved with a little bit of housing and just a few more places. I know, a lot.
It's very difficult in Southampton.
I know.
Kathleen, is there the ability to opt out at any time?
Absolutely, you could choose not to submit your data, you could choose not to recertify. It's completely an incentive-based program.
I saw in some of the grant applications that you just have to have submitted your application in order to qualify. You don't even have to have gotten to the point when you're approved. And Brookhaven said that as well, that they received grant funding while their application was pending.
You had to submit your letter of intent for many of the ESD and the Department of State grants. You had to submit in a letter of intent.
And they allocated their money in different places, too. I just have one last question. In terms of how the town goes about applying for the grant, is the process as such, we would apply for a grant, we'd have to submit a resolution, and then the state determines if we are awarded, once awarded? There's, do we determine where the funding goes? Or is the determination of where the funding goes, does it have to be before we are awarded? How does that?
You, obviously, ESD and DOS score and administer New York Forward Long Island Investment Fund. I would imagine any application, you would want to be explicitly clear about how you want to use the funds because that's how they're going to judge your application based and compare to the other applications. So if you're putting a more compelling application where you're having a wider impact in your community, I think that would be more favorable or an application that would score higher.
Okay.
I mean, based on the chart that Dave Wilcox gave us today, we don't qualify to submit the letter of intent because the numbers aren't high enough.
You can definitely submit the letter of intent.
But it has to be.
Any community can submit the letter of intent. And then you have 90 days from when you submit the letter of intent to completing the application.
Which would include that resolution.
But you don't need the resolution if you have the 1% or 3%. But if we don't have that, and Dave, that's correct, at this point, we don't have that to submit.
What's the number that we need, Dave? I see we have 331, my calculations are.
Well, for this year, we would have needed to issue 333 building permits, we only issued 161.
Yeah, so.
Because you have to subtract all demolitions, right? If you subtract a unit, you have to subtract that from your number.
And that's 0.48% increase over last year.
And that's actually most of our new building is, follows a demolition.
Right.
So, if we want to do this, we don't submit the, we don't submit the letter of intent and this data, which doesn't make the qualifications, the way is to do the resolution, right, that's what you're saying?
The letter of intent is the first step, so we have to do the letter of intent regardless.
Oh.
And it's just that, it's really simple, it's just a letter that says, we intend to pursue the application for Pro Housing Community, and that's really it. That's the first step, the second step would then be, in our case, to pass that resolution, which has those pledges in it. And it appears that we meet all of those pledges already in one way or another. So, that, that, after that pledge is done and we submit that resolution, we would then complete the application. And my understanding is we have until March thirty-first to then submit all of our, um, data.
If you submit.
Yeah. But what those pledges mean to us might not be what they mean to someone else, so that's the concern I have with that, having to do the resolution avenue.
Thank you for bringing that up, that's such a good point. Kara, do you want to talk a little bit about how we've been flexible around the resolution and allowing communities to modify and define and clarify terms?
Yeah, and I think, I think Kat talked about this a little bit already, but we are asking that communities adopt the resolution as written, with the exception that if you want to add language, um, we're asking that you please pass it by us first before you pass it, but we are allowing communities to add language, a lot of them, um, actually, especially on Long Island, have wanted to include language about past growth or past actions that they've already taken. Um, so we're allowing all of that, um, and then just to emphasize again what Kat said earlier, um, we're really, um, we're thinking of the resolution as a menu of options, we're not, we're not thinking, um, that you have to take every single one of these actions in a specified way, although it sounds like you already are, um, but we're, it's, it's meant to be flexible.
And you could use the things you're already doing, and you can, you, you can clarify what the resolution asks written and link or point to the actions the town has already taken to increase your housing supply, to help hopefully make it less, um, concerning or less frightening for some residents, because it's definitely, you all are doing a lot of the right things. Um, and you are definitely thinking about how to increase housing supply, but I also understand that you want to be mindful of your community's concerns and restrictions or parameters, so we're here to be a partner and to help you. And if there are things that we could be doing better or more tools or resources that you need, that's part of why we wanted to have this program. Again, the state has not always been as accessible and available to localities, but we're at a, a real inflection point, and the crisis requires all of us to kind of get, be at the table and be a partner. So, we're here and hopefully we can continue this conversation. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Kara, should you just make one good point is, with regard to these pledges, we don't have to do every single one of them, right? It's, it's.
Yeah, we know, we understand different things work in different communities, there, there are things we think that do help increase housing growth, um, in general, but, yeah.
So, we'd probably want to tailor the resolution to just make that clear so that we're comfortable with it.
Absolutely, you can add some, add a whereas clause or two that make it clear about what your goals are as a town and what you're looking to do to grow your housing supply or what your priorities are.
And that can change year to year, so as you expound, um, you make a specific, for example, we have Riverside, that's where I'm mostly concerned with the amount, amount of time and effort and money that's gone into Riverside getting done. Getting revitalization, downtown revitalization money now becomes very challenging, if not participating on the program. But if, for now, you want to make that as part of the, one of the factors, and then later on, as we grow as a municipality, add other factors, factors on, you can always do that, can always layer that on.
You know, now that, Curtis, now that you mentioned that, and you were actually recently at the North CCAC meeting where you talked about a, a, a future housing project there as well. Um, how do you see, because you mentioned pro housing designation, how do you see this benefiting the, the, the housing authority?
Uh, okay, we've already mentioned that, um, the awards, award process is already very difficult, very, very challenging. Um, we were fortunate enough to get Sandy Hollow and Spianca done, um, but that's only because we had to do a, a scattered site. You had to do north and east of the canal, I'm sorry, south and, uh, east and west of the canal. Um, that would not have gone independently, and it looks like in the direction that we're going now, our projects are really going to be centered around uniter, under thirty units.
Right.
I think that's our cap, so it makes it even more competitive for us to look for New York State to, to viege for that opportunity. Um, we're having conversations with New York State to say, we are not the same as Westchester County, we're not the same as Brookhaven Town. So, we can't, that's an apple to orange comparison, and so we should be looked at a little differently in terms of our needs here, uh, locally. Comes a little more difficult to still have that conversation and not be participating as a pro housing, uh, municipality.
To your point though, I think the state, if their goal is to increase housing, should be making it easier for you to get funds for projects of merit like that than making it more difficult.
We're one municipality over a region of the entire New York, I don't think New York State's focusing specifically on Southampton.
No, but their goal is to increase housing statewide.
And we are listening, and we are making modifications and adding new capital programs or trying to be as flexible as we can. When you're financing smaller projects, it's harder, there is smaller margins and it's not as easy. So, the smaller the project, the more challenging it is to pull in the resources that people typically use to make projects affordable.
Tax credits.
Tax credits, you have to have a certain number of units in order to qualify for tax credits, so then you are talking about subsidy only, like cash money only projects, so that requires a number of different sources, and that's harder to get in this market and this environment. Hopefully, interest rates will continue to go down and the capital market will open up a little bit, but, I mean, it's going to take some time. So, the smaller the project, the harder is the finance.
Locally here, we, we put in a, a transfer tax, and that was done through public referendum, you know, for that reason. We know that our projects are going to be smaller projects, ones that commensurate with the community.
Obviously, you can have a boss.
Right, the matching grants, you know, through community housing fund, and we've already started on some of this, and Curtis, you mentioned a few. You know, we have, uh, an initiative in Watermill and, and we're talking about one in Bridgehampton, Senior Center.
We talked about Sandy Hollow too, second phase of that.
So, all of these are going to be funding, and, uh, and not, not just local funding that we have through Community Housing Fund, but, uh, state help as well.
And the program where we initially started in twenty twenty-three before it became a requirement, a lot of the smaller localities we were meeting with were really energized because they could not, they, they weren't competitive when applying for the grants, and they were constantly losing to larger municipalities, and they kept, they, they needed something to help them get over the edge. And again, they want smaller projects, those are harder to finance, they tend to have gaps, these grants can help you fill those gaps, especially the ESD infrastructure funds, that's definitely a useful, and what we've heard from localities is a useful tool.
We were told that, um, the developers that could benefit from this don't apply directly, that it's all through the town, so the town controls the funds.
That's right.
And, uh, that's good to know.
That's greater for local determination, if the town controls that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to confirm that that was true, so you'd be able to get us that language, that budget language? Thank you. Does anybody have anything else? Thank you for coming to us.
Thank you for coming out.
Absolutely, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thanks for pulling it together, Kara, and the statistics, Dave.
Yeah, thank you.
Good to know.
Kara, if you could, uh, just stay for a moment, we have a resolution that's tabled that indicates one, one percent, that we meet that criteria.
No, we don't meet that criteria.
But, so the numbers, we, we went to using census numbers then rather than other numbers? Okay, um, so if we were to move forward in this, that resolution would have to be, have to be changed, if, if the board determined that we want to move forward.
Yeah, we would have to amend that, and I can help with that.
We want to discuss this now? We want to move forward with this?
We want to see the language, I'm sure they'll get us the language pretty quickly.
We've got time.
Yeah.
We don't have to do it until March.
Well.
March?
We want to get it, you know, the application going, if we're going to do it.
Yes, I'm withdrawing my resolution because I don't have support on the board to pass it.
Well, the resolution doesn't, you know, would have to be changed anyway because of the wording, doesn't, you know, referencing the one percent, right?
Yeah, we'll have to fix it up.
Yeah, so let's just have them send us, she said she'd send us that budget language right away, and then we can confirm everything that we talked about.
As soon as I receive that, I'll get that off the board.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to our liaison update, Tommy John.
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
We're getting new pictures very soon in here.
Very nice.
Thanks for calling downstairs in the CAC.
That's nice, can't wait to see them.
What happened to the, uh, existing ones?
She's putting the new ones in the frames.
Recycling the frames, we're going to do updates.
She just took them today, she'll bring it back up this afternoon.
Maybe twice a year, we'll flip the pictures and get new pictures.
We have great projects in the town, I always liked seeing the projects that we had completed for the community.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that what the new pictures are going to be?
Yes.
Bel Air Cove, I'm guessing?
Excuse me?
Bel Air Cove, I'm guessing?
I don't think there's a Bel Air.
Not until, not until it's all finished.
That's what's done.
No, but like the trustees, the signing of the, you know, the picture we all took with the trustees.
Hide that next to the Donegan Patton.
Yes.
Yeah. And, uh, uh, yeah, I don't have anything either, other than, you know, I know we all went to Veterans Day celebrations over the weekend. I went to the one at the Hampton Bay's American Legion where they dedicated the new building, and it's great, and they're very proud, and we're happy for them.
Yeah, I was, uh, yeah, I was there too, uh, Councilwoman McHenry got an award.
Yes, congratulations.
It was, it was very nice to see everybody and, um, also Jackie McKay was, uh, one of the Legion members, uh, spoke about what it's like being a woman veteran in particular, and some of the struggles that women faced, um, in, in, you know, the armed services. It was a very, very nice, very nice event.
It was nice also to see Chief Kieran and Justice Pat Gunn show up for the community and.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I had a East Quogue CAC meeting last night, um, we had a guest speaker, it was, I'm going to butcher his name, August Rucktischel.
Augie Rucktischel, yeah.
From the Clean Energy Coordinator from the Royal Energy Hub, gave the community a lot of great information, I have, I brought some of it back to our office if anybody's interested, um, a lot of great, uh, information for stacking grants for, you know, green energy programs in your home, and it was just a lot of good information, there was a lot of good dialogue last night. I mentioned, um, you know, they, we had discussion about the budget, I had mentioned, um, the potential of the town doing an update to the comprehensive plan. Um, they are looking for an updated Hamlet study, um, they're very concerned with, um, potential new development in East Quogue and maintaining their character, and I sent them the old study as long, as well as the, um, Hampton Bay's pattern book, and they would like to see something similar in East Quogue, uh, the Hamlet study was done in two thousand eight. Um, they would like an update that's more East Quogue-specific as far as not just the whole overview of the town. Um, so I told them I would forward on that request.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
That's a very good idea.
Yeah, what I had asked Janis, starting at the first of the year, um, to come in and talk to us at the work sessions.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just to go over what the current, you know, the nineteen ninety-nine comprehensive plan has, and then show, go through the, the Hamlet studies too, so that we're all up to date on what's there and then what we need to do, so that fits right in.
You know, because I had mentioned to them, like, you know, it's, it's, this is, you know, it's, yes, it's a, it's locally driven and it's a plan we hire and outside contractor. Going through the process of having done the Climate Action Plan and also the, um, and also the, just the pattern book, you know, some of these things can get contentious, contentious, they get changed, I know the Climate Action Plan had a lot of statements in it of things the town, you know, should do, and that all got changed to, you know, basically saying that you may consider doing this, um, which kind of took the weight of that document out of it, but it also, at the same time, that whole proposal was supposed to have more community input than it ended up having due to time constraints. So, I think that language change was kind of like a, since we didn't have the input we said we were going to have, we're not going to make these like mandatory changes, we're going to, you know, make these all suggestions.
Um, but the comp plan update will definitely get community input.
Yeah, so it, it's just how it's done, and they definitely want to be very involved, and like I said, they're, they're really more interested in a Hamlet study and maintaining the character of East Quogue and the buildings, the Methodist Church has a very large holding on Main Street that, you know, when the governor had put forward the potential of, you know, fifty units an acre on religious properties, that was a big eye-opener for people, and they really don't want to see that downtown, there's a lot of historic buildings, there's a lot of, you know, community character that they want to maintain, so.
Did they have any input about the hundred and eighteen homes that are going to be put in in the compatible growth area of the Pine Gardens?
They actually did, there were lots of public hearings on that, actually Supervisor Schneiderman had.
I know that, I, I'm saying in your current meeting, this, you know, adding, uh, asking for an updated pattern book or an updated, uh, Hamlet plan for East Quogue.
I think they're more concerned with the downtown look and feel of East Quogue and, and.
So, it's more of a downtown thing?
It's more downtown, like, like I said, I sent them the pattern book. Yeah. So, and I'm sure if they're thinking that other Hamlets are as well.
Yeah, I'm sure. All right, well, thank you, well, that's it, then I move to go into executive session to discuss confidential legal advice, personnel, and acquisitions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.